Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. Pursuant to Executive Order 202.1 and subsequent orders closing district schools issued by the Honorable Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, signed March 12th, 2020, and due to the concerns of the Board of Education for the health and safety of the community emanating from the current COVID-19 pandemic, there will be no in-person public access to the aforementioned board meeting, and instead, the meeting will be livestreamed and recorded. Access to livestream can be had by accessing the school district's website for a link that will bring you to our YouTube site, and the recording of the meeting can be accessed on www.farmingdaleschools.org. In addition, the public participation portion of the meeting shall be suspended by board resolution. Mrs. D'Amico, may I have a motion to suspend public participation?
I make a motion that pursuant to the aforementioned executive orders, the board is suspending the public participation portion of the meeting, and therefore accordingly, there will be no public participation at this board meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Please note that the Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of the public to share their ideas, comments, and questions. You may send your feedback and questions to us through our email account, boe@farmingdalschools.org. A member of the district's administrative team will respond to you, and then questions will be publicly addressed at next week's board meeting. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Mr. DeFendini, can we have your monthly update, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm going to start today's meeting by introducing Mr. Dave Talyer, partner from Noraki Smith. I'm going to ask Mike to do a brief introduction of Dave, talk a little bit about why he's here tonight, and we'll get the meeting going with our presentation of the financial statements. Mike?
Thank you, Paul. So tonight, we have Dave Talyer from Noraki Smith. Noraki Smith is our internal, I'm sorry, our independent auditor for several years now. We have a longstanding relationship with the audit firm. They come in two to three times a year to do a lot of testing on the financial side of the school district, as well as limited internal controls that are related to the financial statements and the financial controls of the district. Dave is here tonight to present some of the key facts and summaries related to the year ending June 30th, 2020 financial results. Dave?
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, everybody, for inviting me to this evening's meeting. Like Mike said, my firm, Noraki Smith, we were contracted by the school district to perform the audit of the financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2020. We also performed a single audit of the federal award programs administered by the district, as well as performed an audit of the extra classroom activity funds. We presented our results to the audit committee on the night of October 8th, where we went through the financial statements in depth with the committee members and went through the conduct of our fieldwork and the results there. So tonight, I just have a quick briefing of those financial statements for you, but again, as I'm here, I'd love to answer any questions or comments that anybody may have. So the first thing I just wanted to, before I get into the numbers, is to really talk about the business office. I know I've done this, you know, over the last several years when I get to meet with the board, so I like to just spend a minute to really just to emphasize the strength of the business office there at the district. You know, we are, my firm is involved with many districts across Long Island, and we're lucky enough to be involved and with a lot of good people, but specifically at Farmingdale, you really have a strong team there, and you need to, because it's a very large district. But the team that you have assembled and that are there do a wonderful job. Everything is really found to be in order. As Mike mentioned, we review a lot of the internal controls relating to the financial reporting function of the district. We found there to be no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no suggestions or recommendations that we have on strengthening those internal controls. So that's a really big thing to say. The second part of it is also, as everybody knows, we've been dealing with the COVID pandemic and how it, we understand how it's affected the operations of the schools, but you have to also understand that unfortunately, the school still operates on a day-to-day basis, and that's really funneled through the business office. They're still, they were still processing transactions, paying bills, paying teachers, still dealing with us and going through all of the records and providing that stuff to us. And that, not only continuing to do that on a superb effort, but also still managing to meet the timeline that we had to have, which was still filing the financial statements by the October 15th deadline, and we did meet that deadline. So a lot of hard work was done by the business office, again, kind of jumping, changing our procedures on the fly with not only trying to be on-site when we could, but we had to do a lot of things remotely, and just, again, the attention and the effort from the business office really made that happen. So I wanted to make sure I communicated that to the board to kind of start my presentation. So just briefly, I will just kind of highlight some of the financial numbers for you or some of the things that I thought should be summarized and brought forward in front of the board. Again, our audit report is a 70-plus-page document, so there's a lot of information contained in there, but a lot of it is good. As I mentioned, there were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. Our auditors report are clean or unmodified opinions, which means that the financial statements are presented in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, and they're free of material misstatement. And for the year, your general fund, the budget was within the tax cap, which was promulgated by the state. There's a lot of information contained in there, but... Sorry, had a little feedback there. All of the general fund, fund balance amounts were well within reasonable and legal limits. You had restricted fund balances in seven different restricted categories, of which about $6.6 million is being appropriated for the fiscal year 2021. So that's monies that's being utilized that's current to balance next year's budget and also pay for some expenditures that carry over from this year to last year. And at the end of the year, there's been a lot of, obviously, capital project activities ongoing, so the district has just about $100 million in capital assets net of depreciation charges, with the current year increase of a little over $2 million to that effect. The district continues to pay down its long-term indebtedness, which is bonds payable and energy performance contracts. We reduced those long-term liabilities by a little over $3.3 million in the current year, and the district has enacted all of the accounting pronouncements that are applicable up to this point. All the GASB pronouncements that we had to implement have been fully implemented and are heretofu within the financial statements of the school. And that was, that was the main part of the financial statements. The last thing was just, I did mention that we performed a single audit of the federal award programs. Now, this is a little different than just a financial statement audit. It's also compliance-based, so we went through the various federal grants that the school adheres to and receives, and we found no compliance issues, no question costs, and everything was found to be in conformity with the various compliance requirements as well within those programs. So again, a very, very strong positive report as far as that goes, but again, we all know that there is some, you know, some tough times ahead that the district has had to position itself and really have to react to as each day kind of comes. So we're proud to have the relationship we do with the district, and again, we're happy to be here this evening to present and go through things. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or go through any of our procedures or anything that you'd like while I'm here.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Talyer? Okay. Dave, I want to thank you again for your work, for your professionalism. Again, we've had a longstanding relationship with one another, and, you know, glad to see that it's going as well as it is. Not surprisingly, we do have a lot of very good people, you know, in place in order to be able to serve this function of the district, and wish you well, and I think we'll probably be talking before you know it, again, you'll be back here doing the financials again next year before we know it.
That's true. It does creep up really quick, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Have a great evening. Bye-bye.
Okay. I'm going to jump in with just a couple of general updates before we turn it over to Mike for a presentation regarding the tax levy distribution for the upcoming year. The first one for the board is just an opportunity to, I guess, share some good news. We've had the privilege, with the board's support, to start to open up a variety of opportunities for our students over the course of the last month. After-school activities, clubs at the middle school, the high school, as well as our elementary schools has opened. We've opened up opportunities for students to participate in various athletic-related activities through an intramural-based program that we're offering now here at the middle school, as well as a preseason program that we have going on over at Farmingdale High School. So it's good to see our buildings occupied in the after hours, something we haven't seen since the beginning of the school year over the course of the last month, and that life, I think, that exists in the building definitely bodes well for us. We've done well enough from an operational standpoint that we've been able to offer these opportunities. As a reminder, we are preparing to open up our elementary schools to, as we're nearing the end of the first trimester, we're preparing to open up another set of town hall-style meetings for our elementary parents. Those are set for November 10th, where our elementary school principals will be able to speak to parents who are right now operating in the remote learning platform, inviting them back to school for those parents that are comfortable. Again, we had defined two different periods of time for our students to come back to us from a remote learning environment at the elementary level. It's the end of the trimester, and at the secondary level, it's the end of the semester. So we are nearing that end of the trimester, and our principals will be communicating with their parents about all the different protocols that are in place, the kind of an environment that we've created here. Our hope is that parents are surprised, pleasantly surprised at how effective we've been able to be as part of our opening plan, and hopefully, we can get more kids to come back to school. There's no doubt that we miss them. Teachers miss them, and we know full well, the best environment for our students is certainly when they're with us. So this will be our first opportunity to welcome back all those students who are comfortable coming back to school at the end of the first trimester. As you know, yesterday was Election Day. Our schools were all open for the election. We were able to operate largely in a remote learning environment for our staff as a professional learning environment for that day, which freed up our buildings to hold the election. I can say that there was really very little concern in the buildings. The operations of it were pretty smooth. There were a couple of lines at differing times of the day, but the Board of Elections worked well with us in this instance, and our buildings were able to open smooth enough and get people in to vote on Election Day yesterday, thanks to our security staff, thanks to our custodial staff, you know, for being around, obviously, to help support the Board of Elections and their work yesterday. I think as a result of that combined effort, it really was a successful day by all estimations. Budget update and timeline, so we are, crazy as this sounds, entering into budget season. You know, we've already started to receive some of that important information that we need pertaining to the budget for the 2021-22 school year. Mike will be sharing a budget timeline with the Board of Education in the coming weeks, laying out a number of meetings that we're going to set in place in order to be able to start the conversation about the 21-22 budget. Obviously, there are some concerns that are out there, you know, pertaining to the budget, and, you know, the CPI, obviously, at the present moment, still continues to hover at or around zero. There's concerns with regard to state aid, but as Mr. Talyer mentioned, we do the best we can trying to be as well-prepared for these kinds of environments as possible. So, you know, we'll certainly be talking more to the Board of Education and subsequently to the community about where we are, what our current financial condition looks like, and how, you know, we're going to be preparing to provide and present the budget to the community for consideration as part of the 21-22 school year. And then the last thing that I have on my update is just a quick capital update. We've had a good fortune of some very good weather. Our aquatic center project has been going along swimmingly. See what I did there? Swimmingly? Got it? Yeah, see? Yep, it's a dad joke right there. So the north wall is already erected, the pool basins are in place, the coping around the pool most recently was installed, conduit lines, roughing, rough-in of all the plumbing is done. They're preparing to actually pour the actual concrete slabs, so we are making excellent progress on our aquatic center, very exciting. As far as an anticipated opening date, I've been asked that question a lot. We're still in the same timeframe as far as a finish date, probably toward late spring, late spring, early summer. We certainly be at a point in time where we'd be more confident providing a final date, but as to the end of the project, but that should be a rough timeframe. Some of it's predicated on the weather. We don't know what kind of winter we're going to have, but the contractor is moving along really well, and we are very happy with regard to the progress of the aquatic center as it stands today. Bathrooms, again, the community-approved proposition last May to allow the district to finish bathroom projects, and as Mike had updated his, the Board of Education is part of his weekly update to the board, we are expecting the bathrooms in large part to be completed over the course of the next year. Bathroom projects are going to start to commence in some of our buildings after hours to, again, minimize the interruption to the academic environment, but not lose this valuable time to get some of that work in. So, you know, we're going to take all the precautions we need to, but at the same time, we know the importance of getting our bathrooms updated, and we want to make sure that we are capable of moving that work along. And the last piece is just energy performance contract. Again, the Board of Education approved an EPC a while back now, and a couple of the components of that project are now being filed with the state, and the community can expect to see probably sometime during the course of the next year, new lights, as crazy as that is. I know, it feels like yesterday that I was talking to the Board of Education about energy performance contract number one, where we were replacing old lighting fixtures with basically new fixtures of a similar kind, but just more efficient fixtures and ballasts, and here we are, you know, not even, not even seven years later, and there's an opportunity to save even more money through LEDs. LEDs really generate very little to no electric bill, and that combined with the work that is planned, solar carports around the district, as we provided the projected information to the board, could actually zero out our electric bill between the savings we're going to see as a result of the LED-related work combined with the ability for us to install solar carports at all of the back parking lots throughout the district could actually have the intended effect of zeroing out our energy bill. So that project is also moving along nicely at this point in time, and we're excited to begin to realize some of those savings in the coming years. So any questions from the board with regard to anything going on? And I would be remiss if I didn't just take just two more seconds just to thank again so many people that are working so hard, right? This stuff doesn't just miraculously happen. There are so many people behind the scenes who are doing really tremendous work every single day, keeping our buildings open, keeping our kids in the kind of place that they are right now, which is far better emotional circumstance than they were in last March, April, May, and June, and it's taken quite a bit of effort on the part of all of the different people in this district that work every day to make that happen. And again, I'd be remiss if I didn't take the time to thank every one of them for putting themselves on the line, stepping up, and I think doing a really fantastic job. Very proud of them, and wouldn't be here if it weren't for all of them. We would be doing the work that we're doing without the people in the trenches doing the heavy lifting every day. So my team that's on this call, thank you, and to the greater team that exists across the district, thank you for what you're doing. Couldn't be any prouder of every single one of you. Thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Goldberg. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Motisi to finish up, so he can have a nice lengthy conversation about everybody's favorite topic, property taxes.
Paul, you know, just share my screen. All right. So, welcome to tonight's presentation on the 2021 tax levy. It's important to know that, you know, we call this the tax levy presentation, but it's really a presentation regarding the distribution of taxes and what you actually see on your tax bill when you get it in the mail. First and foremost, the tax levy that the district, that the voters approve, is what is used to help support the programs within the district, right? And it is our largest source of revenue for supporting our programs. With the 2021 school year, the voters approved a tax levy increase of 1.95%. Now, that is an increase on the Farmingdale levy. So the best way to explain that, and this is just, you know, to make sure that anyone watching really understands what's going on here, is that if we had a $100 million budget, or tax levy, I should say, to support our programs, we are then increasing it by 1.95%, and then that increase plus the original $100 million is then distributed throughout the taxpayers in the towns of Oyster Bay and the towns of Babylon. So a common question that we get this time of year is, I know that you stayed within the tax cap calculation. I know that your budget was less than 2%. Why do I see something different on my tax bill? And really, tonight's presentation is aimed at trying to do my best to help you explain, to help you understand how that is. And this is a very complicated topic, and it's an even more complicated year due to the reassessment that happened in Nassau County and the town of Oyster Bay. So let's first talk about what goes into the distribution of your taxes. So what determines your tax rate? So as I just mentioned, the district is responsible for establishing a budget, and the voters are responsible for approving a tax levy. And that levy, since its enactment in 2011, the district has always been within the New York State tax cap levy limit, and the voters have consistently approved that levy limit. That levy is then, that information is then split between the two counties, between Nassau and Suffolk Counties, and I'm going to go into that in a minute. But in order to do that, we're reliant on a number of information that comes from the state and from the county. So specifically, the assessed values of the properties, the base proportions that are exclusive to Nassau, and something that's known as equalization rates, which are used to bring the values, the assessed values of the property up to full value. And we're going to go into that a little bit right now, a little bit into what these terms mean on the next slide. So the base proportions are provided to us by Nassau County. Base proportions essentially represent the four classes of property. You have your Class 1, which is residential, and your largest class of property, Class 2, which is condos and co-ops, Class 3, which represents utilities, and Class 4 represents commercial properties. And the base proportions are provided to us by the county, and the percentages are used to distribute the levy, whether it's $100 million or whatever the allocation is to the Nassau side amongst the different classes of property in order to come up with the tax rate. We're going to see an example of all this in a coming slide. Additionally, the market values and assessed values are provided to us by the county. So Nassau and the town of Babylon are responsible for assessing the home values. Nassau, as a result of the reassessment, had to drop their level of assessment from 0.25% to 0.10% of fair market value of a home. We're going to go into that in a little bit to see what that looks like as a result of the reassessment this year. And then for the town of Babylon, they've always come to their assessed values of their homes using an Appraisers Construction Manual. And then lastly, the equalization rates, which is probably one of the more complicated areas of the equation, are provided to us by New York State. So imagine there's nearly over, there's over 4,000 taxing jurisdictions in New York State. Each of them, kind of, not each of them, but there's 1,200 assessing units, each of them does their assessment a little bit different, and the equalization rates that are provided to us by the Office of Real Property Tax Services allows us to bring these assessed values up to what is considered to be a more appropriate fair market value in relation to the surrounding area. It's important to know also that a falling equalization rate indicates that the market values are rising faster than the assessed values, and we're going to note that in the next slide as well, when you see what this looks like in terms of the Nassau and Suffolk side of Farmingdale. So this is the tax levy apportionment. So everything that we've just been talking about, the definitions, the assessed values, the equalization rates, it all needs to get put into a formula in order to distribute the taxes between the two towns. So in front of you, you have two sets of data for the 1920 year and the 2021 school year, and the apportion base on the top, where it says 8.2 million, that is provided to us by Nassau County. And again, the 13.1 million is provided to us by the town of Babylon. We then divide it by the equalization rate that is provided by the state to come to the full value. So there you see 4.8 billion for Nassau and 1.3 billion for Suffolk. Those numbers are then divided into the total full value for the district to come up with the percentages you see underneath that, and then, we then allocate the levy based off of those percentages. So the voter-approved levy of $129,693,583 is then allocated based off of these percentages up here to arrive at what each county is going to plug into their tax warrants, which is then distributed to the taxpayers. It's important to know that this year was a little unique in that we had a reassessment in Nassau, and as a result, we actually had to add back in the value of the taxpayer protection plan, the exemption that was related to the Class 1 properties. And so what you're seeing at the top, the 8.2 million, was actually lower based off of the assessed values that were provided to us by the county, but we asked the Board of Education, based on the recommendation of the Office of Real Property Tax Services, that we should add back in the value of that exemption, otherwise, the distribution of the taxes between the two counties would not have correlated as it does right now. So if you, if you look at the 2021 distribution, you have 78.17% versus 21.82%, and in the 1920 year, it was 78.3% and 21.6%. Without having added back that exemption, there would have been a disparity, and there would have been a significant shift as a result of the reassessment to the town of Babylon's side. So what we did is we had the board approve a resolution that would, that would correct Going back real briefly to the base proportions, this is a comparison of year-over-year. As you can see, the distribution changes very little from class to class. This is really not what drives the, I mean, it drives the distribution of the taxes between the different classes of property, but if there were ever a significant shift from one class to the other, it would be noted here on this, and it would be noticeable to those taxpayers. But as you can see, year-over-year, and this is the trend year after year, where they do, they are relatively similar. where they do, they are relatively similar. The average taxes a Farmingdale resident can expect to see. So this is a little tricky. So the average taxable value is provided to us from the county. So Nassau County and the town of Babylon each year provide us with the average taxable value. We then multiply it by the tax rate, and then you divide it by 100 to come up with the taxes that will be paid. So for, what this slide is saying is that the average taxable value of a home for the town of Oyster Bay is 279, with a tax rate of $2,864.79 for total taxes to be paid of $7,992,076, or a $125 increase or 1.6% year-over-year. And then if we switch over to the town of Babylon side, you'll see the same, same information being provided, the average assessed value times the tax rate will give you the taxes paid. However, there's a slight increase on the town of Babylon side. And I'm just going to go back two slides real quick so that you can see where that's coming from, three slides. So if you go back here, you can see that there was a slight shift in the apportionment to the town of Babylon, which is resulting in, which is, which is as a result is showing a larger increase on the Babylon side than on the Nassau side. This fluctuates from year to year. You will see increases, sometimes a disproportionate increase on the Nassau side versus the Suffolk side. It really varies, but minimally, from year to year. And again, going back to what I said when I was originally on this slide, which was that the, that special exemption for the taxpayer protection plan needed to be added back into the assessed value, to the base, so that we could properly do the apportionment between the two counties. So getting into the reassessment. So this is quite complicated, and really, we just got all of the information that we needed this weekend. But the reassessment was in effect, was done two or three years ago and effective for the 2021 school year. The level of assessment had been changed from 0.25 to 0.1 for all Class 1 properties. And as part of this, the administration had put into effect what is known as the five-year phase-in exemption or the taxpayer protection plan. This exemption will automatically appear, whether you realize it or not, on your tax bill. So for example, if you have an assessed value, and I'm going to show you in a few slides where you can find all of this information. But if your assessed value of your home, per the notification that the county provided to you, said 500, for example, your taxable value would actually be less. And the reason for that is because of the five-year phase-in and the exemption that is being applied to your tax, to your assessed value in order to minimize the impact on your, on your, on your tax bill. So this, this, this presentation will be posted on our website, so you don't have to write down this information of where you can find more information. But those are the two websites. The Nassau County Ask the Assessors website has all of the information that I'm speaking about and more. You can find frequently asked questions, contact information, contact numbers there. And then if you're looking for specific information on your residence, you go to what's known as MyNassauProperty.com, which is that last bullet on that page. You type in your address, and you'll be able to look up all the information you want on your taxes. And as always, I am available for any questions that anyone has for how to understand all of this stuff. So this is probably one of the most powerful slides that you're going to see in tonight's presentation. And the reason for it is it really shows the impact of, not only the effect of the reassessment, but really how two, two properties can differ very, very greatly. So the first example is an example of, and these are actual, these are actual Farmingdale homes, by the way. Both are, both are in the town of Oyster Bay. They are, one, one is a resident that consistently grieved, and the other is a resident who never grieved. And as a result of the, as a result of the, the, the assessment process over the last decade, the, the home values were deflated, right? So everybody knew that if you wanted to lower your taxes, you grieved your assessed value. And the courts were so overwhelmed with the number of grievances that they were receiving, that it became commonplace to settle these grievances. And as a result, drove down the values and created great disparity between homes. So just to walk you through this, this top example first for the 2021 school year. So again, this is a voter-approved levy of 1.95%. And these are the numbers prior to any, any, any star deductions or any other type of exemptions. So for the resident that consistently grieved, they had about $8,200 worth of taxes that they will owe this year for the 2021 school year versus the 1920 school year of 7,000, approximately $7,400 in taxes. This represented an 11.2% increase for this homeowner as a result of predominantly the reassessment. In this case, there are other factors that I'm going to talk about in a minute. But as a result of the reassessment, this homeowner is actually seeing an 11% increase in their taxes because we are now starting to see the, the, the five-year phase-in start to build in. Had it not been for the five-year phase-in, this would have been a much larger increase. Now shifting over to the other side, you see a resident who did not grieve their taxes and is actually paying $300 less, or approximately 3% less than they had in the previous year. Again, the levy for the school district went up by approximately 2%. So you would suspect that both of these homeowners should see an increase if all else was equal, right? But that's not how taxes work. Unfortunately, it's very complicated, and the assessment is only complicated further. Going down to another hypothetical example, well, I'm sorry. The first one is an actual example. This is a hypothetical example. Had the district not had any increase in the levy year-over-year, if that $100 million was our 1920 and our 2021 tax levy, the first resident would still see a 9% increase in their taxes, in their school taxes for the year. And that was really what the, what the assessment was aimed, aimed at, was doing. It's correcting these faulty, or I should say artificially low assessed values of homes. And the taxpayer protection plan was aimed at minimizing that impact over the next five years. Factors that are impacting the distribution of the school levy are obviously, as I just mentioned, the impact of the reassessment, individual residential tax grievances. So you are still allowed to grieve your taxes. That is New York State law. There's nothing saying that you can't grieve your taxes. Arrow, the Arrow website on Nassau County is still available. You can still do it on your own. You can still use a lawyer, if you prefer to do it that way. It is a little bit different than it used to be. It's actually a little bit easier in some ways, but in some ways not because you can grieve, the website does a lot to try and help you, compare your property to other, to other properties. But it becomes harder now because a lot of the properties that you would be trying to compare your home to, the, the values have increased as a result of the reassessments. So trying to find a home that is of lesser, of a lesser assessed value to lower your taxes is a lot more difficult now because the reassessment is really doing what it was aimed at doing, which was correcting the, the faulty, the artificially low assessed values. And then lastly, and the residential tax grievances and the approved exemptions, these are your senior citizens, persons with disabilities, and veterans. These are all certain exemptions that certain people can, can apply for. They impact each home a little bit differently because what happens is just because somebody is getting an exemption doesn't mean that it doesn't get paid. So these exemptions and these tax grievances, when they happen, they artificially shift the taxes amongst the rest of the tax base. So really, when you're looking at your tax bill and you're trying to understand why you either went up or you went down, it could be for a number of reasons. And I, of course, am here to help you try and understand that. You know, I get a number of phone calls this time of year trying to help residents understand why they do see an increase or a decrease. But 99.9% of the time, it is for one of those reasons that are listed on the bottom of this slide. This is the website, MyNassauProperty, that I had mentioned earlier. There are two ways that you can look up your home. You can look it up by your section, block, and lot, if you know that. Or you can do it by address. I prefer to look up by address. You would just type in your house number, your street name. When you're typing in your street name, don't put in north or south, and don't put in avenue, or court, or street. If you live on Idaho, you would just put Idaho. Or Idaho Street, you would just put Idaho. Then you would put your town that you live in and your zip code. And then that will take you to this page here. And on this page, you'll find all of the information needed to really understand your taxes for, for a few years. They have four years' worth of data up there. Even further, when you go into the general and school taxes tab that I have circled there, you can look up what you paid in taxes going back, I think, 10 years or so. But specifically, up on the top right here, this is where you'll find all of your notifications related to the taxpayer protection plan and the reassessment. Down here on the bottom, this one in the middle, is, this is our current school year. So this is the, the current fair market value and assessed value for this home. So as you can see, this home went from an assessed value of $240,000 prior to the reassessment, up to $485,000. And that is, and as you can see, it's going up even more next year. And the taxpayer protection plan, the five-year phase-in, is aimed at minimizing this increase on the, on the taxpayers. And then lastly, the general and school taxes tab, as I mentioned, that's where you can actually see your general, your county taxes and your, and your school taxes, and any exemptions that would be applicable to your property. Just to give a quick update on some STAR information, there hasn't been really any major changes in terms of STAR or anything this year. But just, just to recap so that everyone is aware that there are different types of STAR, there's basic and enhanced STAR. We'll go into the eligibility requirements for that in a minute. But there, there is a big difference in the STAR exemption and the STAR credit. And this is important, especially for new homeowners or people that are making more than $250,000. So the STAR exemption is what you see on your tax bill, where you see the exemption coming off of your bill. So let's just, for example, the, the STAR amount is $1,000, and you owe $10,000, you'll see $10,000 minus $1,000 for a total of $9,000 that's owed in your school taxes. The STAR credit is very different because what happens is the state sends you a check in the mail, and you have to pay the full taxes upfront. Now, this was enacted, I believe, in 2015 for all new homeowners going forward. So if you're a new homeowner, you're purchasing a home, you're, you're primary residence this year, you will not be, you will not see the STAR exemption on your bill. When you get it, you will have to apply for the STAR and then receive a check in the mail from the state. And this can get tricky for new homeowners, especially young homeowners, as they move into the area, and they buy homes where residents originally had the STAR exemption on their tax bill. And so occasionally, they do believe that they're getting into a home where the taxes are only $9,000, going back to that example I just used, but the taxes are actually $10,000 prior to STAR. So it's important for new homeowners to understand that. And, and for anyone that's making greater than $250,000 or less than $500,000, you really want to enroll in the STAR credit program. You really, you're required to. STAR eligibility for the 2021 school year. Primary residence, ownership, age is the major factor in determining whether you qualify for basic or enhanced STAR. And then lastly, the, the income limits for the basic and enhanced STAR are based off of your 2019 income tax return that must be, obviously must be filed with the state because they do, they automatically look at your return. So this is especially important for anyone who's in the enhanced STAR program. You must enroll in the income verification program with New York State because that is how they verify the amount of money, the amount of money and income that you took in for the year in order to make sure that you qualify for the enhanced STAR. Lastly, just some important deadlines. As you've probably noticed already, you haven't received your tax bill, or you did just get it probably today. They went out last week. They were scheduled to go out in the beginning of November and are due November, December 10th this year. That was a result of legislation that was passed, I believe, by the governor or the county to, to extend the taxes this year as a result of COVID. So your tax, your, your school tax bills are due by December 10th. January 2nd is the deadline for your, any, any new applications for the STAR program. And again, I go back to any senior citizens that are in the enhanced STAR program to make sure that you enroll in the auto, the income verification program. So that is January 2nd, 2021, that deadline. January 4th, 2021 is for all of the other exemptions that you might apply for if you're a senior citizen, you're a person with limited disability, limited income disabilities, volunteer fireman, volunteer ambulance workers. All of those exemptions are, are due to be filed by January 4th for the 2021, 22 school year. And then lastly, the, the reassessment, I'm sorry, the assessment grievance process, as I mentioned before, you can still grieve your taxes, your assessed value of your home. And the grievance period does not open until January 4th, and it is open for the first two months of the year. And you would go to the Nassau County website, Arrow website, where you could do it on your own, or you could contact a lawyer, one of those firms, Maidenbaum, that, that does, does the process automatically for you. And that is really the, the gist of, of the taxes and, and the, the tax levy apportionment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has at this time.
Any questions from the board?
Okay.
Thank you, Mike, for your detailed report.
Thanks, Mike.
Very complicated area, I know. But that's, that's it, that's it for us, Mr. Goldberg.
Okay, that's it. Great. I call for motion to approve the minutes of the September 14th, 2020 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 14th, 2020 special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th, 2020 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th, 2020 regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. I call for motion to approve the minutes of the October 19th, 2020 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 19th, 2020 special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
You most certainly have. The board received a series of emails that spoke to issues of racial equality and racial equity. There was an email regarding a specific CSE meeting. And then there was a parent letter regarding a staffing issue. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers.
You're welcome.
Are there any committee reports from the board?
Yes, I have a few, so if someone else wants to go first, that would be fine.
You could, you could start us off, Kathy.
Okay, sit tight. I'll start with, the Safety Committee has, everything is pretty I'll start with, the safety committee has, everything is pretty much virtually. So the safety committee has met and discussed many of the safer, excuse me, safety features that has been implemented. Policy, policy committee has met several times over the last couple of weeks. One of the policies we have tonight, 1120, will be on for action. And the other two policies, 9651, I believe, and 0100 will be discussion, for discussion tonight. Glenn heads that committee and does a great job with that, as well as safety. Everyone involved in all my committees is fabulous. They just lead the way and we just contribute. So the, all the PTAs basically have met this month. And the focus has been on many different things, but the PTA, New York State PTA resolutions have all been discussed. The PTAs are, convention for New York State is going to be held virtually November 13th to 15th. And I will be attending for the high school. There are several other people attending. It's all going to be virtual, like I said, so that's a little challenging, but we'll do it. The resolutions also were discussed at a New York State virtual meeting last week. Anyone who wanted to get an idea of the resolutions could join in. So I was able to take on on that and learn a few things about their resolutions as well. Putting a little meat into two of the new resolutions, which we think was a favorable decision. If anyone wants to jump in on the PTA meetings or if you want to just add that later, I was just briefing in the PTA meetings because there's so much was discussed in each and every one of them. You want me to continue? Is anyone else anything to say about the PTA meetings right now? Okay, okay, so I'll just continue, then you guys can fill in wherever I left off or have you. Let's see. Bear with me a second. Okay. Formdale Youth Council, we met last month. Our next meeting will be November 17th. We're not sure where we're going to have a meeting yet or if we're going to go virtual or in person somewhere. At our last meeting, the, we had a nominated committee. I'll put out a slate for this coming year, which the slate will be voted upon next meeting on the 17th. As all our meetings are following, right now, the calendar that we put up last year. And the slate that they're proposing and to be voted on next month is, well, actually this month, it's November already, would be Margaret Andrew as trustee, Harry Polaski as secretary, Joanne Vasquez as vice president and myself, Kathy Lively as president. So that will be voted on, like I said, the 17th. And then after that, December would start the two-year term. Formdale Youth Council, really none of the programs are running right now. We're hoping to start whenever we can after the new year. Our winter program, hopefully, will be starting their swim program on, in January, on the 14th. So we're keeping our fingers crossed for that. That's the intention. And anything you want to find out regarding youth council can be found on their website, formandaleyouthcouncil.org. Let's see. Formdale Chamber of Commerce, very busy, very busy month. The Formdale Chamber of Commerce will have elections for their upcoming year, November 5th. And the 14th, they're planning on, I think I mentioned last month, but to give you a heads up on, it's a shred event. The shred event, free of charge. We'd like everyone to come out and just bring their their information that they want shredded confidentially. You'll have three boxes per person. It's all complimentary. It's going to be held, like I said, on the 14th, but it's going to be held from 11 to 2. The Village Parking Lot, number four, behind the firehouse. It was first intended to do a stop and shop, but they decided to move it over there to have a better venue for people coming and going. So mark that on the calendars, November 14th, it's a Saturday. We've had several ribbon cuttings and more to come. So the businesses are doing pretty well, considering we're supporting a lot of the businesses and COVID, it doesn't help with their success, but they're doing okay, most of them. Our Formdale Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors had chosen our 2020 Outstanding Businessperson of the Year. The Board of Directors chose, excuse me, chooses the person involved. Suzanne and I are on the board and so the criteria was met unbelievably by Joe Fritterer, who is involved in the Nutty Irishman and 317 Main Street, right here in Farmingdale. He is unbelievable in what he does. It was by unanimous vote by the chamber. He gives so much to our community, does a lot of events, leads a lot of events and effortlessly, he just goes and doesn't think twice. So we want to thank Joe for his involvement in our community, all he does. He was recognized at the end of October in a, in a nice ceremony that was well-attended, social distance, of course. The, bear with me a second. I have also a little report on the New York State School Boards Convention. Would now be a good time to kind of tap into that? Or how would you, oh, could you do that now? Okay, yes. Okay. All right, bear with me on this because it was a quite extensive convention. New York, New York State School Boards Convention was held virtually this year. It was held over a two-week time period, starting like October 20th, working with some of the communication workshops. They also had, two days later, a law seminar, all done virtually, like I said. The, then the educational sessions started on October 27th, went through the 29th. I was able to take, I think there was 12 or so educational seminar workshops during that time period. They were amazing. I was also able to take seven of the, including the law school and communications workshop. So I do have a lot of information that I can bring to anybody. If anyone has any questions, look at the agenda, look at the sessions. I can also get them through the account as copies of anyone would like to see them. But going through the workshops, listening to them, we're doing great as a district. A lot of the workshops that I took was basically, I said, we're doing that already, we're doing this already. Proud to say that we are on top of a lot of things. And I think, actually, we could probably teach some of the other districts some of the things we're doing and what makes us kind of successful, what we're doing in those aspects. So I was proud to go to those workshops and communicate with people from around the state as to what we do in our district and they were glad to hear that. Also, the business meeting, which is actually the official annual business of the board on New York State School Board Association, was held on the 31st. We went through the resolutions, the business of the board. They had elections and more than 225 delegates were involved virtually. We had 27 resolutions, 19 recommended by the resolution committee and nine not, eight, excuse me, eight not recommended. We had some that were adopted amendments. I think there was four or five. And the verbiage was changed to appoint, but not to make the resolution really any different than what we had voted on as a board. So the, our board resolutions that we discussed basically remain the same. I didn't see any difference in changing any of our decisions based on what was being said at the convention by different school districts. So the resolution you have pretty much all the same. I have the information regarding the updates and the amendments, so I can pass that on to everybody. And it was quite a great experience. So thank you all for giving me the vote of confidence to bring the board's resolutions forward. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that on behalf of us, Kathy.
Oh, you're welcome.
A lot of time and, you know.
Thank you. It was my pleasure. And, and it's quite a different experience doing virtually. But, you know, we learned a lot. I have some, quite a lot of information and it would probably cost a lot to print it all out, but it might be worth it in the end. So thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. I'll just, you know, piggyback on some of these, Suzanne and myself, and also attended the chamber person, businessperson here, Joe Fortuna, is phenomenal. Joe does a lot for the community, schools. He tries to help anyway, can he, Joe is well-deserving. Mario and I froze on, not as much as Paul froze on Monday at the Halloween parade. It was great that the district was able to, to provide that for our seniors, our graduating seniors, because it's a very special day. Friday was a total washout and the fact that they were able to move it to Monday, although the wind gusts had to be what, Paul, 40, 50 miles per hour at the wind gust? And Paul was wearing his SpongeBob costume and basically shorts and a T-shirt. And he looked a little cold, but he hung in there and the kids were enjoyed and the the students from Woodward were out there, socially distanced, out there, bundled up and it was a great morning, right, Mario?
It really was an awesome day. And just my opinion, I think it's one of the best traditions we have here in Farmingdale. And the costumes were unbelievable again. The effort that the kids put into these costumes was amazing. And, I mean, it was cold, it was 30 degrees with a wind chill and, and the kids were just having fun. And that was the best part about it, it was great.
Yeah.
That's funny, go ahead, Mike.
No, I was bundled up, I thought, I thought Paul was going to have to call school for a hypothermia, you know?
I have to say, the parents there were as doubly excited as the kids. I was able to see it too. And just the parents, like, social distancing, were trying to be respectful but going like, get out of my way, I want to take a picture. It was good to see and the younger kids there too. It was awesome.
It was, it was a, it was a very nice thing in these, in these crazy times we're in right now to have a little bit of normalcy and you know, well, well done by the district, a little bit different of a parade route, but it was just well done, based on the kids. I mean, the, the kids were excited because I was there and the, their big thing was walking through that, the bus loop. That's all they, they were like, we got it, this is it, we're going through the bus loop now. This is, this is most, you know, it's important for them. It was a good, good day. As far as the PTAs, I, you know, we all attended most of the PTA meetings. You know, I want to say, you know, what a great job the PTAs are doing virtually, doing virtual events, keeping their members involved, keeping everybody informed. Really, you know, kudos to all of our PTA units. They're all doing phenomenal work out there. Would anybody else like to say anything else?
Mike, I just wanted to add what Paul has, Mr. DeFendini has said earlier tonight about the election. The election last night was held in all, four of our schools. And every school had an unbelievable amount of resident voters who participated. I was working actually one of the schools as a poll coordinator. And I just have to tell you, I want to thank also the custodial staff, the security staff of our district for all their efforts in making, making the safety protocols, helping with the safety protocols, helping with the lines being formed. It kept every, our voters, our basically our residents, it kept them at ease. They did a phenomenal job professionally and just peacefully in a manner that got them into the buildings, got them to vote, the residents, and just kept her cool the whole entire time. It was really great to see because I think without their help, it would have been not a good situation. And it was just great to see. So I want to thank them as well for the manner in which they helped our community to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know we had an election yesterday, really wasn't, you know, aware of it. We're all good. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items one, A through F, two, A through C, and three, A through G, be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to accept the independent audit report?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education accept the June 30th, 2020 independent auditor report for study and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Mr. Zake, can you have a policy committee update for us?
Yes, I do, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, there were two new policies on the agenda for the board's review. Each of the policies comes to us from the New York State School Board Association and was vetted by our legal counsel at Gerstio &amp; Gerstio, as well as the policy committee, as Ms. Lively alluded to earlier. The first policy is number 9651. It's called a social media policy. This is in response to social media and its growing presence and its significant impact on organizational and professional reputations. This policy is a guide for responsible, appropriate and safe social media use by all members of the Farmingdale school community. As you know, schools have entered a world of remote learning as well. And this policy kind of states that when an employee is interacting with students online, they are presumed to be acting in his or her professional capacity, not in a personal capacity. It speaks to the fact that all employees, while acting in a professional role and using social media, are expected to follow the same behavioral standards online as they would in their classroom. The policy addresses that employees using social media act in a manner consistent with his or her professional obligation to act as a role model for our students. It speaks to the restriction of all employees using personal social media platforms during school hours, as well as the need to create separate personal accounts aside from their professional accounts for school usage. Lastly, it applies to the non-use of any district logos, word marks, athletic logos or district images on an employee's personal social media accounts. Does the board have any questions regarding this particular policy? Okay, great, I will.
One, one quick question, I mean, as this, this is a, you know, social media is a, you know, an item that's moving quicker than any of us ever anticipated. So is this a policy that we would, you know, possibly revisit on an annual basis to really keep up with what is, what is going out there?
Absolutely. Absolutely, you know, this policy is kind of a response, Mr. Goldberg, to that movement that you, that you just alluded to. And it's going to be one that we will have to evolve with as social media and different platforms evolve and the continued expansion of the use of social media as, as our district employees are alluded to do in so many different aspects of their, I guess, educational components, as well as their work within different components as employees in different social media areas. We will absolutely continue to revise this as it becomes more prevalent and we kind of adapt with the, with the times.
Well, thank you, I think you said it perfectly. It's something that has to evolve, you know, it evolves fast enough, that's for sure.
It does, thank you for that, board. We will, we will place this on the consent agenda for December. The second policy and regulation, 0100, is titled nondiscrimination and equal opportunity. This is a new policy for us that is mandated by the state. There were recent changes to the federal laws regarding Title IX that necessitated policy updating. When we were preparing to make the mandated revisions, we discovered that the district actually did not have this policy and regulation in place. So although we were already in compliance with the laws and the federal laws and conducting ourselves appropriately and consistently with Title IX, and conducting ourselves appropriately and consistently with Title Nine laws, we needed to put this policy in place. So the policy addresses annual notification of established grievance procedures for resolving complaints of discrimination to parents, employees, students, and the community. It addresses the nondiscriminatory access by students to educational programs, counseling services, course offerings, student activities, as well as the recruitment and appointment of employees, benefits, advancements, terminations. Some of the newer mandates which came about with the federal law, we've also consistently followed, but it also requires us to put in place website postings, which we do, building posters and notification in our calendar, noting the district's Title Nine quarter's name, address, phone and email information, that's yours truly, that already is in our calendar. We also have to predominantly display this policy and regulation on our website, which we do. And lastly, as a Title Nine coordinator, it requires that I re, complete, complete some training programs, which I have also done according to the new laws. So although we've continued to follow Title Nine rules and regulations, the actual policy wasn't in place, which is why this is coming from the school boards and we need to add this policy to our policy procedures. Does the board have any questions regarding this policy? Wonderful, thank you very much, we will also put this on the consent agenda for the December board meeting, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Aiken. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone, have a good evening.